Listen, when I saw the people in the fight, they were blocking the place where I said we would go to the whole city. And I'm like thinking that with us, I'm going to be able to see what's getting better. And the whole thing is like, listen up to your teammates. We get up here. I think it's hard this way. So we're just gonna need it done and thrown out. Right? We should have spent a lot of money on this. Yeah, they're managing me on this. But it's all right. But it's all right. See, that's the old one. I mean, they should probably get around to it. Yeah, but same with the smartest guy. It's not so much a challenge to me. So I think that's why we're shooting at patients. You know, it's like too old. It's early.
What was the name of that project? It's always one night. A roundabout or a team.
I said, but they used to be down this way. And I was like, somebody would serve me to do those returns. And I got some of this.
All right, everyone, please, please, I had to step up for me because I added myself. So I, what the? So this is a public hearing for the Golden Hill rezoning project. However, I cannot start until I get a couple of committee members here. They're running late upwards to 20 minutes.
That's an insult.
So I apologize.
Well, they knew we were having this, right?
Sorry?
Did they just?
Did they not know or? Because we might think I've noticed. Thank you.
No, that's your fault, man. Definitely not your or you guys' fault.
At this point, I'm just wanting to say we're going to start this meeting late. I'm going to digress back from any comments or any questions that you're asking me right now.
No, definitely not your fault. I just find it like it's on them for not being here because they knew that this meeting was. It's just it's it's we already feel like the way this is seen to us for them to not be here on time is really just kind of reiteration of that.
It's an insult to injury.
Yeah, it's like it's like we already don't think we care, but the fact that you're not even here on time is just it it doesn't reflect more than you folks if you're here.
Yeah.
Right? You obviously are here. It's the others, particularly our older men who's in the third ward. So I think he's the one who's laying because if he was here.
For the record, I didn't vote for him.
This is.
He did not.
We just need one more person.
Yes.
So it's Randy's fault really because he's the ultimate overlord. He should be here.
What's his issue?
He should talk to people.
He runs all the yard here.
It's not anyone's responsibility. And I think it reflects poorly on Kim for not being here on time. So she's at the time here, like even though the man, the best part is this public hearing is held after the planning board already approved the rezon. So the really purpose of this meeting is pointless because they approved it. So.
No, they aren't. Or did either?
Yes.
Okay, we haven't seen the CEQA application. I would like to know who from D E C rubber stamp this without sending one agent to assess the wildlife and plant life in our neighborhood.
I don't think they care.
D E C is not supposed to be rubber stamping stuff. That's what we told it against what they were designed to do. Um, yes. Have anyone seen anything but it's called a CEQA application?
They said they did.
They said it was approved. Who from D E C signatures on it? Who was this D E C that approved?
Did you communicate with someone?
Did you find a D E C person?
No. Didn't you have a communication from somebody from D E C and said it was love to the cities?
Oh, for right, right. Well, that's for for um for the small, for the slip. Right? So they they wanted it back.
So wait, so was it CEQA or was it a slip?
Well, I always thought about the strip observing. And you can't be sure the answer. Who knows?
Because I think that does, you have a right to see who signatures on these things and then approve. But it must be agents.
Sit in the planning.
The final decision.
Yes, yes.
Then it should be in there.
You don't think that, I think the car was underneath, you know, so my project.
I'm just wondering if that in D E C is a word. Do you see it? People feel this one agency protect the maximum protection wildlife. And you see how they steer and come to the work. It's called Turkey.
It was the only. It's a promotion, just to be able to proceed. So.
Yes.
Yes.
But see, this is what I think is funny. The developer's business, Mr. Peterson, I'll give you $1,000 to try to pull that mess and you call Saul these a real stop. I'll give you $1,000 out of my paycheck if I can see you doing that mess over there. They want to keep coming all the time in Kingston. Kingston's already overtaxed almost. But then you don't see them pulling down that and I'm sorry, you mess up money for a time. You pulled everything my money, Saul, this is my tax money. Because I'm sorry, you make me feel like we as property owners, you have to pay our property taxes, don't be nothing. So don't be nothing fine because I'm money elsewhere.
It's just a market. Can you just say easier?
Yes.
You're not, yes.
Yeah, but when a handful of residences start taking our money elsewhere and then they got to deal with.
I'm told you.
The the mess of after a vet of that whole neighborhood.
I'm for you.
So I'm sorry, guys. I'm for you. It's like.
Yes, you're. That for the.
Hey.
All right.
Good. Your time is up.
But then when they ruin Kingston with their nonsense, you like, oh, hey, people, you know, you don't want to come living in Kingston and buy no house. They're not. Because when you over when you overpopulate or over have any density in overpopulated neighborhoods, if you're going to have any.
It's customary.
That's just a statistical fact. You don't even have enough money taxes wise to cover the police necessary and you deal with the nonsense. And you think law enforcement, you don't have to, you don't have to protect the citizens. This is upstate New York. My mom's in this thing. I don't know what to say.
They have some people that somebody told them that sixty, this is still in school. I know we don't say it's a dance. And then it was like. Way in front of my house, ten to two months, something scary.
Still great.
What's the name called?
Yeah.
Sixty. Once from Ulster County College. So much to stop.
Yes. Oh, I have to mention.
Now somebody got. Did it? He's scared of not here. Hasn't been.
You found the CEQA? Yes.
So. I'm going to start down here past this. If you could write your print your name and your address and then we will call you up.
I'm speaking. Um. Okay.
You know, we can find documents from my neighbors. So.
Who?
Making.
Awesome. Yeah, it's actually. But the irony is to kill all the things that get terrible looks. I mean, like, you know, renting the some, the, you know, the city owners that you got, you can't find.
Yeah, like, it's a hard business.
Nothing. But it's like you, it's like they literally hired someone to spend $20 million.
Yeah.
Like a new website. It's like something, you know?
And I hope some of these future, these future businesses give us some turkeys. They're like, give me the credit. This will be new calls, give you all these colleges over here. And let them work for the city. That's a good thing about being around the car free.
Did you say car?
They're going to weigh $20,000 in steel. How many maybe here? Out.
And he.
Exactly. You're waiting the stool long.
You're just racing. They do nothing.
Exactly. You're really. I'm so mad because they did this mess up that I already paid off my stool long. That's what you say. I was like, they don't have to hold.
They shouldn't be.
But that one shows up first.
They shouldn't be every billion, $2,000. So. $2,000. Say five.
Yeah, I mean, just come to intern though, get some kind of internship. But.
I'm not saying that.
Say there. Revenues on the brother. It's when we.
Like you.
They gave us a.
Which one?
This. It was a little thing saying up in the area. It's in there. So I. Right. It's worth.
Right, here is it. Yes.
Yeah.
You're in the case interface, House of Commons, Council.
And yesterday it was, because we're dealing with stabilization, we'll have to say it. Look.
See.
I'm a.
A C R.
Yeah. Honorable or villainous, I've never been so honored. But it's all their fact sheets and forms that would do it. We'll come in very again.
I can't leave her a job in the next.
What?
Yes. My job.
We need our work. There's. There's. So. You. And. There's. Right. There's.
Sure. You might.
I thought I'd just get.
Yeah. I would. It's like my life, they're like, they're like.
I do.
You know, that will be three, two, three, something like.
No, that wasn't happening. It wasn't happening for the big one.
Oh, yes. Yeah. Every day.
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah.
No, it was $20,000. For. That was all your serum, honestly. Your serum. It's already out.
Now this is how this much of stomach is like. This is like. What should put it?
They don't.
Yeah, there's like. Yeah. 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 I'll say.
Yeah. They don't care. Yeah. Right here.
No, apparently he's like, same, I don't know. Maybe. The other maybe. And now. She's not going to be there.
Oh.
He shows to you. He is.
Get back to her. Sleep.
So. I never saw it. Staggering. Never seen it. I don't know.
I know. I know. Sorry. I'm. They're getting a little bit.
I'm just.
She's very. But it is, yeah, I was. I didn't see her inside. You want to know this?
No.
No, it's good.
They like.
It's very.
No. It's like, I looked at the results of the progress. And it was very, you were my face.
I can even.
It's like, I had the right to keep him on it. I don't even know if I called that the whole day. And she never got back. So I thought, well, that's interesting. Then I started the other. This is. She got a. Had a feature. Or is that really? I don't really. I think one of them channels.
Most of the three. Zeno.
No, I like it.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, he probably.
That's what that's kind of the ball is.
That one's.
Yeah.
Us.
I think that would be.
That is our state. So I think this massive housing nonsense that I hear is that might mess with that whole. Part of my chair. It bring it into some revenue, teasing money into Kingston. And we're working focus on that.
So can you explain again? Because I know it was there.
Trump is.
I got.
All the way to.
Said something else.
So. It's not true that.
Yeah. I'm sure. Charge. But I just. To. I think that's. Probably a lot. All right. Yeah. So. It's. Nice. Yeah. Yeah. How do you make? Well.
I had once in building. I had. And in my home situation, then I'll wear that song. Okay. So. Get to sleep.
Yeah. Oh, it's.
I got. I got.
Yeah.
So because now the other person. You know, have an exception or something. Right? Exactly.
Right.
Who's here? In the. The.
Yeah. And. We.
The.
I. 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 You. I. I'm. I'm. Sorry. Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, so she has to get down. She has some council. So. I can't. And we. But I think you're certainly. We.
Well, so.
So. So.
Nice. Yes. No. Be nice. Interesting. Oh. That's. I'm. Sign you.
It's. It's. Yes. Okay, so then she's. The. They're really sort of, they're in. The. Challenger and that is from. Yeah.
Not a front. But.
Yes. I feel. We.
I'm. I'm strange. I see the.
And we suit this. Here.
Hey, you have to be. Uh. This is. Right. You've got. You're. Access. Right. But. See. But. All right. Next session. Go to.
Sorry. I'm. But the thing we have in our house, they tax us on.
Unless you are already. Yeah. I'm. Change.
Well.
Especially which.
I was. Well.
That's. It's. I'm. I said, sir. Just. Step. So. They. I'm designing a quest way to. Right. This.
We have.
I think. Being. So. I. That's there. Something I see. Maybe that is what's. I think. Actually. Great. Check. Me. Community or anything here to. That's. Yeah. Yeah. First. I think. To. Know. For. Oh. I'm. The child. You want. Close. It's. To. The.
It's like. You have to know what it sounds.
You're. You're. What is also. So. Yeah. She always. Because. There is.
Oh, shit.
Yeah. She was saying. Right? Yeah. Oh, she had too much. They. Yeah. So. Yeah. That's.
Oh.
That's. Uh. Yeah. 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 I mean, what? Yeah. Three, seven. Well, yeah. Seven. Well, that. I just have a tax. A lot of that. I lost. Yeah. I. 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 Yes. No. This is. I. I. Yeah. Yeah.
You need to. That. I should. I should. It's. No. You know. There's. I think. There. It's.
Yeah. It's. I. Well.
We. Have. Some. There. They're. 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 We. Now. We.
I'm. I think. But he's also. I'm. Some. Kids.
Oh, that's. Really. That's true. There. There's. There's like. Yeah.
It's so. Okay. I'm. I'm.
But. You know. From.
Yeah. I think. That's. Well, I. But that's. Yeah. Yeah. Actually. That's. Yeah. I think. True.
Hi, Carl. All right. Let's get this stuff.
It's. It's. I see. So.
Want to type off? Okay. Oh, that's on me. Right here. Yes. Um. Really. I was. You guys. You wanted. No. Okay. All right. The second one. What is your name? Hello.
Thank you for your patience. I appreciate it. We're going to start our public hearing tonight. Council members that are here, myself, Rita Worthington, Chair of the Laws and Rules Committee. We have all Frank O'Beir and all the women. Sorry, all the men called Michael. Right. And all the woman Barbara Hill. And our clerk, Elisa Tintin is here as well. Okay, so this is the public hearing. It's being called by the Laws and Rules Committee of the City of Kingston, New York, in regard to the rezoning request for the Golden Hill Project. Um, we also thank you for being in this room with us tonight. Um, when it's your turn, we're going to ask that you please state your name and your address for our record. All speakers will have three minutes to speak. And I'm going to thank you in advance for adhering to the time limits. Um, any written comments that were sent in, they also have been made a part of the record. And so with that, we're going to go ahead and get started. First speaker.
Michael Burke.
May I, would you please come up to the table?
Thank you. My name is Michael Burke. I live in 443 Peachtree Road, Southern, New York. And I'm then is director and chairperson of the C O C, which is the Community Continuum of Care. It's an entity, category that is responsible for housing. And it's required by HUD to bring one for four million dollars of the housing. And. Together here. Um, I want to say that I strongly support this project. I want to say that my agency and other agencies, but especially my agency, because we have a reputation as being the place to go when you're homeless. It's really struggling. It's a fact that we're getting calls every day, multiple, 10 calls a day of people that are being evicted that are homeless. And that don't have an opportunity. They say they have a three year old child and there's no place to go. And my staff is saying, we can help you with other things, but we don't have any house. And that's really what they need. And so that's, it's really demoralizing. I worry about, I worry about my agency's staff. And I worry, I worry more about the other people. But it's very hard and we need to do whatever we can. This is the biggest project of the county of City of a long time. It is affordable. It has some development of targeting people that need help. It has the funding, at least for those people, and it will have the funding if all the approvals happen. So I want to say that for the services that we provide, we really are committed to making sure that they're good. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I have another two minutes.
Yeah. Yeah. No.
Matt Westlaw.
Lenzel.
Again.
Matt. Lenzel.
Well.
Hello.
Good evening. Just want to say. Guess we're glad to be back for the second time. I said come back for the third. But. Gonna be happy to be here. Uh, I noticed just for the record, Alderman, Ray Scott Childress is here. We did have to wait twenty minutes for this to take place, so. I'm glad that two can move forward, but. Um. I kinda just wanna say that, um, I'm not sure why we're here, actually, to discuss the public's concern regarding this rezoning when, on Monday, the City of Kingston Planning Board approved, uh, the rezoning request along with the project site plan, kind of making this public hearing pointless. Um, I just wanna know what's going on. I mean, how can these things be approved, uh, before the public, uh, has an opportunity to issue their thoughts? Uh, I think that's a question that I'd really like an answer to. Um. But many of them, I guess, will pretend, uh, that our voices matter. Uh, the first thing I wanna say is that I support the project. I think everyone in this room supports the project. The only problem is, the land doesn't support it. Um, the rezoning request is for a property that once housed our county jail. Um, they don't build county jails on easy-to-access pedestrian-friendly land. They just, they don't do that. Um. Yet the jail's been vacant for almost ten years and not a dime has been spent improving the access for the property. Uh, but don't just take my word for it. At the January twenty-second City of Kingston Public Hearing Safety Committee meeting, Alderman Olivieri stated, and I quote, "I work at UCAT, which is right there, and it does get me cause for concern because there are daily instances where my drivers have to slam on their brakes at the Route thirty-two and Golden Hill Drive intersection because cars are flying up the road." This housing complex is going to add more traffic there and more potential for accidents because, like I said, on a daily basis, my drivers are slamming on their brakes when they're getting ready to go and a car is flying up the hill. Alderman Hill stated at the same meeting that it was, quote, "a no-brainer" regarding the access, regarding the need to improve the access. Further, City Planning Board member Matt Gillis stated at the April twenty-second Planning Board meeting, quote, "Is there any way to get the pedestrians off the Empire Trail onto Route thirty-two in the Green Hill area? Because the way that's designed right now, it's a death trap. And putting a large volume of people on there is asking for trouble." And finally, an independent engineer hired by the City Planning Board issued a report that stated the access to the property is in need of improvement. The engineers didn't say it will be a problem. The engineers said it already is. Now, if you're wondering why you haven't been informed of these issues or why no improvements have been made, well, I would encourage you to look no further than to your colleague, Third Lord Alderman Ray Scott Childress, because we have been providing him with numerous documents and requests to have these very issues brought before the County Council for years. Instead, Mr. Childress troll chose.
Ten seconds.
Chose to build roadblocks and made every attempt to prevent these issues from being addressed. Lastly, the county has a terrible track record when it comes to fulfilling their promises. Therefore, allowing the rezoning of this property to proceed before requiring the infrastructure to be improved is a dangerous venture and one that will undoubtedly place the current and future residents directly into harm's way while exposing the city and its taxpayers to tremendous liability.
Thank you.
Are you comfortable with that in your conscience?
Thank you.
Please do the right thing and vote against this rezoning request for this property until these longstanding improvements are made. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to repeat that I'm gonna ask everybody, please adhere to the reading that says allotted for your time. Thank you.
Dylan.
Thank you. Well, why don't I mention, say, I'm the third board, also the county legislator for District five and nine. Um. So. I, I certainly support the building of a affordable housing project at this, this proposed site. Um. This is a complicated project with different entities involved, right? On the part of the county government that is, that is running this. And talking about county land going to a private developer, and of course, it's in the city. And the city has been the lead agency on a lot of the reviews. Uh. We have present structures. Demolition has begun. We're talking about constructing a new neighborhood over there. Um, I guess I'm just taking this opportunity to encourage the city to think about what role it might play in connecting that neighborhood with the rest of the city and other resources. Um, I have found the city's review process for this to be confusing, um, from different things in the planning board, environmental reviews, and splitting it up with the, the jail demolition. I know that was a county request, um, which I ended up getting to vote on. Might, I did vote against the negative declaration because I thought it should have been studied. That's more on the county than the city. But I'm glad that the extra traffic study was done by the city and that the decision to install late is presumably going forward. Um, excuse me. And, um. So I guess, I guess that's my, my commentary there, and I'll just share. How much time do I have?
A minute.
Okay, thank you. As a legislator, I'm gonna be working with the executive to have. This is more for, for the public's information, but I'll just use my time to, to say it. We're gonna be working with the executive to have another public meeting on the project on the county side. Uh, it'll be happening in November, December. Location and time are supposed to help accommodate the folk, the stakeholders. So that might be folks who've already been involved, such as residents, environmental justice, and housing justice advocates, but also I would invite especially folks who are currently experiencing housing insecurity themselves and who might end up living at what gets built. I want those voices to be able to get in this process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Jo DePapa.
I'm gonna wait for. I might have to speak first.
Okay. Ellen DePapa.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Ellen DePapa. I live at sixty-six Glen Street in the City of Kingston. Again, uh, many of the property owners and residents who live in the immediate area of this proposed housing development did not receive the legal notice for this rescheduled public hearing to rezone certain parcels on Golden Hill from triple R two oh two. This is unacceptable. The Department of State's definition of a public hearing is an official proceeding of a governmental body or officer during which the public is accorded the right to be heard. Many public hearings are required by law on particular matters such as those that must be held prior to a determination by a planning board on a subdivision plat application. Yet, Monday evening, the planning board approved the site plan, special permit, and the recommendation for the proposed rezoning, which contradicts the D O S guidelines for conducting public hearings. Our planning director stated that it was not a requirement that the planning board wait, and she was comfortable moving the agenda items forward because there was a timeframe to submit necessary documents to this common council. Her comments are misplaced. And again, why is this spot rezoning action being considered at this time when we are creating a new form-based zoning code for the City of Kingston, which will be completed before the end of the year? This rescheduled public hearing is a mere formality on your part because the first public hearing was not conducted properly. And simply, this is a mockery and a sham of what constitutes conducting public business. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Mr. DePapa.
Okay. Joe DePapa, sixty-six Glen Street. I don't want to repeat myself. Okay? I said it at the last meeting. That. These people involved in this project, okay? From the get-go, misrepresented this project to the public, to the Chamber of Commerce. Not once, but five times. Okay? They have all been brought up on ethical charges. This has been going on for fourteen months. They will not render a decision on the, the housing development corporation, the. All the committees involved and people involved, they have conflicts of interests. They would have been censured and not been able to say anything at these committee meetings. But they haven't been convicted. They, they've been convicted on evidence. Their decisions from the. The ethics board was, was reconstituted three times already. They quit. They replaced them. They, they, they didn't render a decision because they don't want it. Okay? The other thing too, this is laws and rules, isn't it? If the planning, the planning board committee meeting was out of order, this is laws and rules. And they were out of order, and you should render a decision saying that that laws and rules hearing was, uh, conducted out of order and should be annulled and done over. Okay? Because. I'm gonna tell you, I've been involved a long time before you, 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 or you even got to City Hall. And let me tell you. It stinks. The project started to smell. A beautiful project like that. They have a bad track record. Oh, allow us to move forward, and we'll address your problems later or during. Well. They used the same playbook in nineteen seventy. Okay? And it took them eighteen years to address the problems. Okay, that's not, that's unreasonable. We, we love the project. But fix the issues first and move forward with your wonderful project. What's so, uh, hard about that? Okay? Fix your issues. Move your wonderful project forward, but they don't want to. It's easier for them to bully and buffalo these few residents that live in the, the immediate area, okay? To get what they want, and they did the same thing in nineteen seventy.
Ten seconds.
Ten seconds. I don't need anymore seconds. This is a, a sham. This is a sham. You're a sham, and this whole committee is a sham, and this project turned out to be a stinker.
That's your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Alana Ross. I'm having to wait for the neighbors to come in. Okay, and it is that. Uh, Charlene.
Oh.
Yes, Charlene LeDane Hill.
Excuse me. He wants to ask last, so he take my, my team first of all. Can you do it? I don't.
Um. That's.
He, he like me, he like one, his three minutes to come to me.
That's allowed.
I'm not.
I don't see why it shouldn't be. I'm sitting right here.
And so I would, I'm not gonna allow it. If you want your three minutes to come up and talk, you can.
They don't like her.
Without she not know how.
I mean, it's the least you can do is to make him wait, making him wait twenty minutes.
It's waiting on y'all.
At least have her have the three minutes.
Just. Stay inside the street, then she'll go from there.
Are you ready? You ready?
Yeah, Charlene LeDane Hill, um, my husband, Herbert Hill Senior. We live at sixty-eight Glen Street, Kingston, New York. We have been residents in the City of Kingston at that residence for over twenty years. Both our children have gone through the City of Kingston public school systems. For thirteen years, I ran Kingston Hoop Summer Sizzle, a not-for-profit I started for at-risk youth that averaged two hundred kids every summer, including our, uh, council member's son, who's great basketball player, by the way. I have concerns, again, it has nothing to do with income disparities or any of that. The problem is, no one has answered one question about the right way of doing this project. I work for a state agency where I know a little bit about projects. No one has addressed the debris removal. No one has addressed a twenty-plus-year drainage issue in our neighborhood. No one even addressed the wildlife we have. Did anyone in this D E C come and look and see, okay, we got these ducks, we got these turkeys, we got these deers, we got the bats that got a migraine, we got the squirrels, we got the rabbits, we got all this plant life. How are we gonna, how is the project gonna affect these things in existence already? No one has answered these questions, and I'm sorry, as a resident who paid property taxes, we have the right to get these questions answered. You wanna put a hundred and sixty-plus unit on land that honestly is not designed to sustain it? And if you can at least show us, hey, in the new age of technology, we're gonna do this, we're gonna invest twenty million in a whole new sewer system, we're gonna divert the water here, something, let us know what's going on, then we won't be kind of upset about this. But I can understand my neighbors being upset about this. No one answers the questions. I feel like this is some political mess being rubber stamped, and I'm sorry. There, there, it shouldn't be that way, because let's say, fine, Michael Burr, I know him very well, he understands the good stuff. Let's say you, you bring all these people in to help, and this unit can't, can't sustain itself on that land. It collapses. The sewers break. I remember years ago, the City of Kingston had a huge sewer issue. Businesses were lost, residents were lost. Do you really want to repeat history that way? All we're asking is residents is, show us, answer our questions. Show us the way you're going to do this. Then we'll be on board with that vision. There is nothing wrong with that vision if it's done the right way. Our concern is, it's not being done the right way. You currently have Empire State Trail on Route thirty-two. It was honestly designed for the, the medium to low-density population to walk across there. You start bringing a whole hundred and sixty-four-plus unit out there, those deaths and accidents will be on y'all hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Did you want to go next?
I'd rather go after.
Sorry, did you want to?
He's out. Yeah, I don't want to hear any of that.
Yolanda Ross, Oliver, New York. Um, I believe that virtually every common council member here, as well as others, and as well as county government, would, um, would be glad to build a series of treehouses if there was a way for them to shovel tens of millions of dollars into the hands of a private developer and put a good face on it because it's a question of optics now, as it was then, and as it will be as long as we have the same elected officials. Um, this particular project, uh, we need, we definitely need housing. But I don't know why we're giving so much money to a developer, I know ARPA money, uh, to a developer and property, to a developer who will then turn it into private housing in, what is it, twenty years?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, fifteen years. So then we'll have just more of the same problem. Um, we really don't need, uh, Governor Abbott to send his, to send his, uh, migrants to New York State because we'll have that problem thanks to the fact that this building is going to be deregulated in fifteen years. Um, I was absolutely shocked when a deputy county executive tried to say that the water problem's there were because it's in the Catskills and it drains onto the property. But the problem is, Golden Hill is almost at the top of that mountain. No, 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 we don't get prob, we don't get water draining from the rest of the Catskills onto Golden Hill. It's a problem endemic.
It's a whole big case of pollution.
So then there, I just read, uh, the letter from the Water Board where it may, it may not be possible to bring water if there's water supply, but how is it going to be delivered? So you've got some serious infrastructure problems that nobody cares about so long as the optics look good. And this is, this is standard behavior. We're going to have the optics of providing housing. And really, I would suggest that you stop getting money to private developers and start actually worrying about housing for people, that, for people who are here already. Um, that could be a solution rather than giving away houses to developers from other cities that where they can then charge twenty-five hundred dollars a month. But, um, so you have infrastructure problems, you have money that you've been giving away. And you know what? A lot of campaign contributions come in return for this kind of thing. So I think that those unique decisions, uh, should be very happy that there will be campaign contributions to your allies which are really contributing to you. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think that is the.
One more.
One more speaker. Next speaker.
Jackie Demetro.
Wait, sit here. I'm Jackie Demetro. This is my daughter Chloe Colangelo. She just turned five. Um, we live on eighty-four Glen Street. Um, speaking today, uh, for it to be documented, um, my thoughts. Um, I don't think it's fair to the people who need housing to come to a location that isn't prepared for them. Um, the issues on Glen Street have been going on since like the seventies between like traffic. Um, it's, it's dangerous. Um, do you want to tell them about your bike ride this week? Tell them. She's so scared. I was just, it's just dangerous. There's no shoulder, really, um, no sidewalks. So like, shouldn't like fall off her bike when cars drove by. And, you know, like, I would feel terrible for somebody to come in here with their child. And it, it's just like a dangerous situation. We're not, we're not prepared for it. That's not fair to them. Um, so, um, I wanted that on the record. Yeah, I told him he fell off his bike. Um, and then also the drainage issue. Every time it rains, I feel bad. It's the herb out there, mad out there, gardeners out there pulling the leaves out. That's not their job. Like, it, it's like another job for them. Like, we should, the city should be paying them because they're doing the work. Um, they're getting soaking wet out there every time. Like, um, our basement flooded, the fire department had to come, herb flooded. It's like, we can't sustain it now. And I can't imagine more people there. It's, it's not, it's not fair to them to bring them to a situation that's not ready for them. So I, I really think it should be reconsidered. Do you have anything else to say? She doesn't want to fall off her bike anymore. You don't want other kids to fall off their bike and get hurt by traffic. Yeah. All right. And thank you.
At the last speaker on the list?
Yes.
Is there anyone else in the, that would like to? We're not going to have them tonight. We're not. Yeah, we're not. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak? Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak? Final time, is there anyone in the room that would like to speak? If not, we are going to call this public hearing adjourned at six sixteen. Thank you all.